Hello and thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Dan Shear, editor of the Green Valley News and the Salwadita Sun, and moderator for this forum with candidates for the Pima County Board of Supervisors in District 2. That district includes Sarita and heads up north into Tucson, including areas surrounding Tucson International Airport and Davis-Mathen Air Force Base. Our candidates are Democratic incumbent Dr. Matt Hines and Republican challenger John Becker, and they're going to introduce themselves shortly. The forum will last about an hour, and candidates will have two minutes to answer questions and one minute to rebut. I also might ask follow-up questions and give extra time as warranted. The point is to just get good information out there and thorough information. The questions come from reporters and from constituents in District 2. Candidates, you now have 90 seconds for an opening statement, and Mr. Becker, we're going to start with you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the residents of Supervisor District 2. My name is John Becker. I'm an Air Force veteran. Spent 30 years in technology solving complex problems. And in solving those complex problems, those solutions always starting with listening. And the last 15 years of the 30 years, I spent serving law enforcement customers, helping the good guys to catch bad guys. I'm a father to a blended family of five. Robin and I have been married 21 years. We have six grandchildren. And throughout my career, I've earned a master's degree, a bachelor's, and two associate's degrees. I've attended the University of Arizona for part of that education and earned an associate's from Pima Community College. And in addition to my work experience in education, I've most recently served the town of Sarita. And it's a planning and zoning commissioner, most recently as the chair. Also served on the Board of Adjustments. And through my life, I've done some volunteer work, including Cub Scouts, Junior Achievement Habitat for Humanity. Thank you.
Okay, very good. And Dr. Hines, 90 seconds.
Well, thank you. I'm Matt Hines. As you referred, I have had the great honor of representing the constituents of Pima County Supervisory District 2 for the past four years. I'm also a hospital physician at one of our local facilities here in Southern Arizona. And I previously served in the House of Representatives for the state of Arizona up in Phoenix for a total of four years or two terms. And I've also been part of the Obama administration, serving as Director of Provider Outreach during Affordable Care Act implementation in the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. And I've dedicated my life to public service, to building a stronger, more equitable Southern Arizona, improving the health of our fellow community members and our environment, and ensuring that our local, state, and federal governments are working to make life better for all of us. I am particularly proud that Pima County, shortly after my arrival on the board, but Pima County was able to navigate the terrible pandemic, the COVID crisis, better than just about any other county in the state of Arizona. And I do believe that my presence was part of this, as well as having an amazing director of our health department. I'm also proud of the fact that we are the first county in the state of Arizona to have a program to provide legal support to those facing eviction, to do what we can to help increase the housing crisis and those suffering from homelessness. And that is actually was something that my office proposed. And I do believe that in general, looking at the affordability of housing is something that affects so many of the voters, my constituents across all over the county. But in particular, it's something I've heard of the most, and it's something I'm proud that we've been able to focus on and make the board focus on from my office and from this perspective. Yeah, look, we have a lot of work to do, and going forward, I intend to focus on those issues and more. It's been frankly, one of the most effective positions I've ever held in government, in public service. And I would very much like to continue if the voters will have me. And I thank you again for this opportunity.
Very good. And housing is one of those key issues we're going to get into here in a little bit. But first, Pima County is halfway through, and we're going to start with you, Mr. Becker, with this question. Pima County is halfway through the 10-year road repair and preservation program. Should supervisors start looking at funding sources and plans for a replacement program or ongoing maintenance? And is this 10-year plan doing what we want it to do?
Well, that's a great question, very important to our community. What I've heard in talking to folks is that the RTA plan had some issues with not having insufficient contingency funds, and that created some problems. Also, with such a big region being served by that single mechanism, we run the risk of more rural areas or different parts of the county not being served equally. So the devil's going to be in the details of the types of projects that come to fruition and the desire to have adequate contingency funding. One thing I feel strongly about is that the RTA, if it's approved by the voters going forward, should be used for improvements and new roads, widening of roads, but not simply repaving. We get HERF and VLT for that. And currently, it's being used to pay the majority of the transportation department for Pima County, and it should be directed to the roads, and general fund should be used to pay for the employees of the county, from my perspective.
Okay, very good. Dr. Hines, let me know if you want me to repeat questions.
Sure. So that might be good just for those who are listening to hear them again, I think maybe as well, right?
Sure. Pima County is halfway through the 10-year road repair and preservation program. Should supervisors start looking at funding sources and plans for a replacement program or ongoing maintenance? And is this 10-year plan doing what we want it to do?
Great, yeah. So in fact, we have accelerated that. This was my colleague Greg Scott from Supervisory District 1. This was his idea, and we acted on this at a time when we had very low interest rates. So we could leverage county tax dollars to actually accelerate by, I believe the number is right around $150 million in additional road repairs within that contemplated in that 10-year program. We've been able to get ourselves to the point where we're, I think, five or six years ahead of where we were going to be at this point. So we have Rex Scott to credit for this. I did also support use of these funds in this way. But this is an excellent question because we don't have, we don't have, clearly, if anyone has encountered potholes like I have, we don't have adequate funding for transportation. And we do need to be able to, I think, contribute some additional funds. So looking at alternate sources is important. And you know, the RTA, I did hear reference to the RTA next plan that's being contemplated. Also very important, we can't just make, you know, more, we can't just be laying down more asphalt. It's so important that we also look at working on other forms of transportation, public transportation, and doing so in a safe and environmentally responsible, respectful manner. So and these are the, well, this is how I plan to frame things as I go forward.
Thank you. I want to follow up with you, Dr. Hines, and actually on something Mr. Becker said about HERF funding, highway user revenue funding our fees, and how that is supposed to go toward a certain, you know, aspect of our roads. But we haven't always been getting that, the HERF money.
True. And again, we need, as I'd mentioned, I do agree that we need to address getting additional funds and stabilizing those funds coming into Southern Arizona to do this work, whether that is additional federal or state funding, when that's available, or looking at other assessments or ways to do this in a way that makes the most sense. But what people need to be able to count on that we aren't just going to be laying down a bunch of roads and then not being able to maintain them, which is incredibly frustrating. And I think that's been a complaint that I've heard from many constituents with regard to the original RTA program, the plan that we're in right now, in fact.
Yeah, I'm very good. And I do want to move on to the RTA. A little bit of background for those who are with us. RTA is the Regional Transportation Authority. It has been funding projects across Pima County since it was approved in 2006. It is funded by a half-cent countywide sales tax that goes away in 2026 unless it is renewed. And that vote on renewal is likely to happen in a, just this coming up May in 2025. So for the candidates, we will start with you, Dr. Hines. Do you support continuing the Pima County half-cent sales tax to fund RTA efforts?
That is a tougher question right now for me than I thought it would be. Yes, I do support this, but I do think it's important that we get a better program and that we get that program under better direction and better leadership. For example, the current leadership, unfortunately, for whatever reason, I'm still trying to figure out, under the current executive director, 35 of 55 of ag RTA staff members have left. Six of the seven directors. So this is not reassuring or confidence inspiring when we're talking about billions of dollars, billions of tax dollars, that we're asking people to contribute to this. We need to make sure that those at the very top are able to actually lead. You know, under the leadership of our, of the current executive director, multiple programs. We're not, unfortunately, we're not even done. And I know that the answer is in part that there is a, you know, a great recession and that those economic difficulties could not have possibly been predicted. But still, I think that we need to, if we're to ask for billions of dollars for something, we need to make sure that they're going to be, that they're going to be frankly, distributed and overseen by a competent executive director who is able to retain the absolute best in terms of the staff. Because when you have two-thirds of your staff, you know, abandon ship, that really bothers me a lot. So I think that's one of my primary concerns. We are all stewards of the tax dollar. So and then the others, we've touched on a very small map, and that is making sure that we're, that we are not, again, just putting down asphalt. That we're also working toward public transit solutions and safer streets. A lot of things that we can do to make these better, and I want to see that in the RTA as well, the RTA next, excuse me.
Good. Mr. Becker, do you support continuing the Pima County half-cent sales tax to fund RTA efforts?
Some people might look at this as we're already spending this half cent now, so it's not really a tax increase. So some might be inclined to continue based on that simple thing. But our citizens are being squeezed in other places, you know, property taxes. And many people don't seem to realize that even if the tax rate stays the same on our real estate taxes, with evaluations of homes going up, taxes are going up. And our people are, I think, close to a breaking point. We've got 20% of our population that lives in poverty, and the devil's always in the details. That half cent could really have an impact depending on what that half cent applies to and the people that are paying it. So we do want to understand that the money would be used correctly with the proper contingencies, with the proper projects. And I'm happy to hear that the incumbent hasn't talked about road diets, you know, decreasing the number of road lanes, because that would be unintuitive because we have surface streets and not much more. So I don't know how we could have road diets successful. So we don't have enough detail at this point to say for sure that I would support it.
Mr. Becker, we'll start with you on this one. This is something we mentioned earlier. What is the county's role in ensuring affordable housing, and have we seen progress?
Well, I'm a realtor, so going back several years, I sold houses using the USDA funding, which helped people get into homes. And if they stayed in the homes for a certain number of years, those grants did not have to be paid back. And that's helped a good number of people. But even before you get to programs to help with down payments and so forth, we have to recognize that affordable housing has many impacts. One is the impact fees, and the impact fees for single-family residences over the last three years have increased from $6,600 to $8,500 per home. That's a cost that has to be borne by the developers and passed along to the home buyers. Also too, we live in a county and a city, you know, Tucson, where some homeowners are really struggling with their insurance rates because of the crime that we have in our city and the homelessness and the drugs that are around and can have negative impacts on the homeowner's insurance, along with the cost of everything going up. Mortgage rates, of course, is pretty much double mortgage rates. And without income increases to the people on that lower economic realm there, it's going to be exceedingly hard to not just get them in a home, but put them in a situation where they can be successful going forward and keep that home. That should be the goal that we have. And I believe we should also leverage things such as the Habitat for Humanity. We need to adjust our zoning codes. We've done some of that in Sarita already with the Sarita dwelling units, 80 years, to allow for smaller, perhaps more dense housing, which depending on the neighborhood that that housing might be put in, the neighbors might not be too fond of having denser lots put in. There's many different things we could conceivably do. We could also offer incentives to developers for doing those things we know that they need to do to help produce less expensive homes. Maybe offering faster permitting, lower impact fees if they build on denser lots, maybe smaller homes to get those young families in a home that they can afford and move forward with. And as we all know, being able to own a home in our country is one of the best ways to build wealth in this country and build a future for your family.
Okay, very good. So Dr. Hines, is the county's role, what is the county's role in ensuring affordable housing? And have we seen some progress?
You know, this is an excellent question. I'm really glad that we're talking about this because it's something that I'm hearing a lot from folks in my district for sure. This is across the country, a huge issue. And while it has not historically been a primary role for county government in the area of affordable housing, it's something that we're working to change, and I believe that we need to continue to do that. The lack of adequate affordable housing is a major issue facing the county and the entire country. And when you can't afford housing, it jeopardizes frankly, everything else in somebody's personal, some families' and families' personal economies. And it's deeply rooted. I mean, like, this goes back to the Great Recession. It's something that has accumulated, I mean, we're somewhere around 35,000 to 40,000 housing unit deficit just in Pima County. So this is not going to be fixed overnight. But I do believe that local governments, including the city of Tucson, Pima County, as well as the state and the federal government, all have a role to play here, and we need to be working on this problem together. We've had a population that continues to grow. And so it's just, it's a supply and demand problem. And we have a history, unfortunately, here in Pima County of having zoning codes that are, and land use plans that do limit our ability to build the certain types and certain amounts of housing that are really needed. And so working to get these revised or corrected, I think, is really important. So it's like an enforced scarcity situation because it is really looking at just, these structures there for single-family detached home, and that's kind of it. And there's a lot of other different types of housing that are important. We need a diversity of housing, not just one specific type that our zoning codes are targeting. The zoning process, by the way, is a bit of a mess, and the deck is definitely stacked against those who are trying to build additional housing, apartment complexes. But on the, I think, the plus side, the good news is we can do a lot at the county level. And there are some of the things we are doing. For the past couple of years, we've dedicated $5 million in gap funding over the two different budget cycles, and it's, I believe, close to $11 million in total that we've been able to leverage. And that has really been quite successful. $38 for every dollar spent from, I mean, our general fund dollars has come from private state and federal funding, which is great in terms of the grants. And we've built almost actually over 1,000 new housing units over the past couple of years as a result of these funds. I would like to increase that going forward. I think it's incredibly important that the county join with the city and other jurisdictions in Pima County to, or across the state rather, to make sure that we are part of the solution here. So I think that we have a little ways to go, though. Are you okay with that? Type of housing that we, that the government contemplates. So that we do need that diversity in housing. But as to your specific question, that doesn't make a lot of sense just to have luxury, super high-end, obviously higher price point apartments, because that's not necessarily going to help us. We need not only a diversity of housing type, but also we need to make sure that the various housing options are answering the demand across multiple levels. So that's going to be someone who is maybe a student that's just starting out, just, you know, leaving their family home and/or just getting their first job. And also someone who might be a little bit older, more established, and capable of paying these kinds of dollars, and they're perfectly happy to do that. That's great. But we truly need to be able to answer the demand across multiple economic levels and also multiple types of housing.
If you wanted to, and on the apartment question.
I think, as I mentioned earlier, there's potentially certain things we can do within the county, the levers we can pull, some incentives we can provide to potentially guide developers to build the type of housing that we need. It's an economic decision for them. And if there's things we can do permitting-wise, impact fee-wise, otherwise, practice, whatever it might be, those are things we potentially pull to help guide them to help the lower economic spectrum.
Dr. Hines, we'll start with you on this next question, and we've touched on it a little bit already. The primary property tax rate remained the same this year, but our tax bills went up because our homes are worth more. Dr. Hines, is tax neutrality a worthwhile goal, or should we get used to property taxes heading up?
So the, I actually, this is great as well. So I have been concerned about the funding levels for our government ever since in the state legislature. When a lot of my Republican colleagues at the time bragged that Arizona was the second lowest funded in terms of the number of dollars we spend on our state government per capita, like all the other states. And they thought that was amazing and fantastic. But then again, you know, if one's buying the two and a half hours to the end, that's why. So we, I don't want to be a easy height city, like any regions in California, North, and the reservation from other parts to Arizona. At the same time, it is incredibly important to have a balance. So it should be absolutely, and because the county, the state, you have to provide services and programs for our residents. And if you have a starved government, we are the government, right? So if you starve, to the point where, you know, you're on both 50 hours, you're not getting through, you're not getting the ultimately on whatever issue that you're facing, but it takes two and a half years to your case, to get both systems to be up. That's also, so I think tax neutrality, dealing with the never ever going to pay anymore that we're already paying, that doesn't make too much sense to me because everything is good enough. Even though now inflation is down to 2.5%, things do increase and up. That it takes the government to be able to pay the workers, the respekter, and at least fulfill their mind by the sector to the best of our ability to do so to retain the talent to work on behalf of the people. So I would say that it needs to be answered with the programs that the heat ski, and not necessarily the tax.
Okay, Mr. Becker, is tax neutrality a worthwhile goal, or should we get used to the property taxes going up? And would you have voted, had you been on the Board of Supervisors, to keep the tax rate the same this year?
Well, there would be an economic reality, and to keep the, well, to be tax neutral, we would have had to go down to 3.7, something cents per hundred. And with it going up to five or being at five, that's quite a gap, right? So but I think it's important to realize that in our area, there's a lot of retirees living here on fixed income, and you've got 20% poverty rate here. And when we talk about, oh, it's $20 a year more, $10 a year more, that $20 or $10, which could mean a difference between someone being able to afford their medicine and food. And we shouldn't be cavalier with making those types of things. I believe the hard work of the county is to sharpen that pencil. And as I've said, squeeze the life out of every tax dollar we've got, be intellectually curious, and find creative new ways to make those dollars go as far as humanly possible. And only as an absolute last resort, perhaps make slight increase because the cost of things do go up over time. But we should, that should be an absolute last resort. And we should try to keep the taxes the same because someone could spend their life paying off their home, still in retirement, find themselves losing it because they can't simply afford to pay the taxes and the insurance. So we need to be very mindful.
Well, Mr. Becker, you've clearly given us some thought. What would you cut right now if you, there were no barriers? What in the county budget will you just slice out right now?
Well, the town should focus on, you know, public safety, roads and infrastructure, parks and recreation. Not that we wouldn't do anything else, but that should be our focus. Because if we focus on those three things, Pima County would be the type of county that the residents would feel happy and safe in, and the businesses would feel safe and secure in being here. And organically, we could attract additional businesses to bring opportunities and pull people out of poverty by bringing those opportunities here in county. The cure for poverty is opportunity, and we haven't done a great job of doing. I'm not saying there's not a place where you might want to offer some incentives, but they should be tied to specific fourth-term midterm goals. And we need to measure what we do within the county like a business. If you're making an investment, if we're not getting the type of return we planned on from the onset, not every return would be a monetary return, of course. We need to stop doing that and use the money efficiently. So I've understood that we maybe added six new departments recently. I don't think that, you know, adding new departments at such a tough economic time right now is probably the best use of the funds. And we really need to potentially think about zero-based budgeting, where we start with the clean slate and justify every tax dollar we're spending. Because it's too easy to go year to year and just make some slight adjustments with it drifting up over the year and thinking, oh, it's $10 or $20 more, no big deal. But like I said earlier, that $10 or $20 could be the thing that breaks someone spiritually, emotionally, and all.
So can I get you to be more specific on what you might cut?
I don't, I don't have any notes on it or anything. So, you know, I'm not a huge fan of DEI because it sounds great to have diversity, inclusion, equity and inclusion, right? But that's just fine as long as the person making the decisions feels that you're in the right group or class to benefit from. We need equality, which sounds awfully similar, but the quality to me is regardless of someone's race, religion, anything that separates us in the world today. We look at economic need and help all those people that are at economic need, regardless of what other artificial group they might fall into. Also, you know, with the environment, I spent several years as a cub master for Cub Scout Pack down here. We should not be careless with our environment, but there's an economic reality we need to weigh. The US puts out about 14% of CO2 for the world. China's over twice that, it's about 30%. We could eliminate CO2 completely and it still wouldn't solve the problem. What we need to work for is, is solutions that make economic sense to help our economy, our environment and everything else, but not just try to wish something into existence, uh, that doesn't make economic sense in the short and mid.
Heinz, anything you would slice out right now if you could?
Well, and this was kind of part of what I was saying. I, I see that there are these aspects affecting my constituents, especially my patients. You know, homeless has been one of them, lack of affordable housing, people struggling. I, I see that we have a greater, a role that needs to be expanded in county government and that. So no, I, I, I wouldn't endorse any cuts at this point. I would be, I would be interested in finding creative ways to find targeted expansion capacity in certain departments for sure.
Very good. Okay, Dr. Heinz, you have been criticized during meetings on social media and the news media for not being in your seat during call to the public. Sometimes you join meetings after call to the public. Is the criticism warranted and why aren't you out there?
Hey, I'm a public official. I am employed and I work for the constituents of District Two. So, of course, part of my job is to, to hear the people and to be there for it. But you don't have to physically be present at calls of the public necessarily to do that. Thankfully, we all, all know, in fact, the, the, this, this forum right now is, is happening with us in different places. So technology is a, is, is, is pretty wonderful. So many times I'm actually, uh, I'm listening to the meeting and to what's going on before I've arrived. Sometimes I'm in the conference room in the back and sometimes I'm, you know, sometimes I'm trying to get to the meeting. So in terms of, uh, sitting in the seat, I think as people will recall for the entire, right after I was seated in January of 2021, I didn't even physically get to meet or sit with Rex Scott or some of my other colleagues. I don't believe Steve Christie either for an entire 12 month period because our meetings happen like this. So in terms of having to be physically anywhere to be able to, to capably and competently, you know, do, do what I need to do for the, for the constituents, I think that we've shown pretty well that that's not necessary. Until this last meeting, which was, uh, this very last meeting, I have a 100% attendance record and very, very, very seldom missed any kind of, uh, subsequent votes. So I'm proud of that. That's, I, I think that, I, I think that stands up to just voting on the board.
But it's uncomfortable sitting out there sometimes when, uh, when you have this parade of, uh, folks coming through and it can be frankly that accurate.
It is. It's usually have, you have a lot of folks that don't like particular aspects of what we're doing on the board. And it is their right to express those things. I, I certainly wish that, that, you know, things were a bit more respectful sometimes. But look, I mean, it's a, it's a family. It's supposed to be, uh, like kind of a family program, right? So having, having someone show up with a blow up sex doll to make some kind of point that I still don't understand was pretty indecent. Uh, the tone that people use also, like, and some words matter. They truly do. So if you don't like a policy, let us know about the policy and we'll look into it. We're very interested, all of us at the board, in, in responding to the, to the needs of the constituency. But the way you do it is important. And if the tone, if, if there's that respect or certain words are used in certain ways, a, a oblique threat. One gentleman a couple of months back said that we should all be subjected to a firing squad. That's pretty darn close to a death threat and that's not necessary. You can, you can tell us about a pothole without threatening us, right? And if it's just being used as sort of a, to just kind of pull off that entire, uh, lot of time for, for political reasons, that's also not a, like, we, we need to be hearing from the constituents who have real issues that you brought forward. And I think it's sometimes, and I know because those who have offered to come to the meetings, I've even said, well, prepare yourself because before you can get up there and off, you're gonna have to, you may have to hang out for quite a while. And you may end up having some really sensitive things. You're gonna hear some things that maybe you wouldn't really wanna hear, but you're lucky to force them to, I mean, I know people stay away from the meeting and I don't like that. I want people to come and express what they, uh, what their concerns are and not fear for, for, uh, you know, themselves.
Mr. Becker, I asked Dr. Heinz if the criticism was warranted. You yourself have criticized him on this very point. But before I allow you to, to, to opine on that, we have to agree that there are a lot of damned idiots who show up for call to the public. Would you agree with that?
Well, I, I use a different approach. Some people say that I have a southern charm. I don't know that that's necessarily true. But I believe as a child, I was taught you catch more flies with honey. So my approach is, is markedly different from, from some of those. But a lot of that comes from frustration, not that that's justifying it. But, um, as, as people in the public eye, as elected officials, we need to have a thick skin. But yes, I, I think, uh, many people go too far in the meeting. I, I would tend to agree with that from, from my personal.
Like what Supervisor Christie says, and he says, it's part of the job. And he, and he is right. It gets brutal though. Okay, we're gonna, um, Mr. Becker, I'm gonna throw this next one at you. Pima County plans to close several. Yes.
A little more fully on what, uh, Mr. Heinz just said. So I've been in technology for 30 years, 10 years of that at IBM. And we saw in COVID that, uh, virtual teaching, virtual meeting wasn't the be all and end all. And through my time in, in technology and working with clients and customers and serving them, we frequently would, would forego doing an online meeting to be there in person, though the experience is a bit different. A big part, like I said, of, of the, what you see at the Board of Supervisory Meeting caused by frustration and, uh, not feeling that they're being heard leads to that frustration. So I think if, if we can do things like being physically present, that would go a long way to alleviating some of that. Also, although the statement is made that, you know, people need to be heard, this board has restricted the time that people can speak to minimize, uh, uh, you know, when there's more than 20 people going from three minutes down to and potentially not allowing, I think, more than 20 unless there's agreement. You truly want to hear from the people. The meeting shouldn't be limited that way, especially in the situation where new ideas are being shared. And as far as the audience being frustrated, um, there's times when our, our incumbent supervisor has, has left the deus in frustration as well. So there's frustration on both sides. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the, the news that broke, uh, over the past few days about the chair putting out a, a very vulgar sign on social media at the same time that she was, uh, scolding the people in the audience about being sick. So I just wanted to mention those people.
Okay, very good. Mr. Heinz, did you have anything, uh, that you wanted to add to this before we move on?
Um, just, I guess quickly on the, on the, uh, I guess we'll frame it as a restriction. I, I would point out that my, actually one of my points was we should align our all to the audience, call to the public with the city of Tucson, which is 30 minutes. So we're at 60 minutes right now and there's always the option to extend that time. If there are more than, uh, you know, if there are more people waiting, for example. It's also important to point out that for hearings, resonings, firework permits, all those kinds of things, those are individual, separate hearings, different from call to the public. And those can have people sign up individually to, to speak on those, uh, specific resonings or other hearings as well. So there are, there are other opportunities to speak through that. And look, I'm open to any kind of way to reform this to make it, uh, you know, more respectful. And I think the respect on all sides is incredibly important. And we could, for example, go back to the days, uh, several years before I got onto the board, I believe under the leadership of, uh, former Chair Richard Elias. The, uh, call to the public was the very last thing before the close, before adjournment. They did all the business of the county and then they had the, uh, the call. I, I like it at the beginning because we can hear sometimes people have an opinion about something we're about to discuss. I appreciate that, but maybe, maybe we should go back to having it at the end of the day. I'm open to that.
Very good. Then since, uh, Mr. Becker brought it up, I do want to pursue this thing regarding, um, Supervisor Chair Adelita Grealish, she gave a thumbs up on Facebook to what can only be described as a vulgar post last week when former President Trump was in town. Dr. Heinz, have you seen her post? And what did you, what did you think of it? And should the board speak out against her action?
I, I was just actually getting briefed by this earlier today, uh, on, on this issue earlier today. I, I may have very briefly seen something. It was, I believe it was on Instagram or maybe Facebook. I, you know, I, I think that we all have First Amendment rights, our constituents, and of course individual supervisors as well. And I would just say, coming home from the hospital, trying to get back to my house downtown, I had to navigate the traffic. So, uh, some choice words bubbled up into my head when I was trying to make it back to my home so I could sleep after my night shift. I didn't post anything about it, of course, but, uh, look, as to whether the board should take any kind of, you know, even discuss it or take any action, no. That, that is, it's, it's an, it's her individual choice to express herself however she wishes. The same, I would say goes for you, our moderator, as well as my opponent and myself.
She is the, um, uh, most powerful person in Pima County in an elected position. And she is basically telling the presidential candidate to screw off, but in much more forceful terms. And, uh, it is supposed, she's supposed to present a welcoming, um, sense of, you know, coming to Pima County. And she absolutely did not do that. But you think that at this point, she has a First Amendment right, we just move on with it. You're, you're, I know you're okay with what she did, but at this point, you don't think it would deserve any action by the board?
Hey, I'm, again, she, this wasn't an official action that she took as chair. I, she was expressing a political opinion separate and apart from, I don't, unless I'm missing something else that, that we haven't been talking about yet. She was rendering an opinion. Um, and that is, that is definitely her right. And it's certainly a lot tamer than some of the stuff we hear in calls of the public. So, uh, but no, she was not making any formal proclamation or statement on behalf of majority of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. So I think it's important to keep that context in mind.
Okay, uh, very good. We should also note that if you had trouble getting home that day, that second gentleman, uh, Emhopo was also in Tucson. Said the reason to, so, Mr.
Yeah. My bad, after spending 12 hours overnight in the hospital, I didn't care.
No, I absolutely get it. Uh, Mr. Becker, Adelita. Sure, yeah.
So that side, uh, it was taken into the boardroom. Those people would not be allowed to stay in the boardroom and the chair has her First Amendment rights. The people do as well. And granted, we should have some more stability. The chair has preached to the call to the public, the audience about civility, but yet acts this way on social media. And although it wasn't an official act, um, First Amendment protection should apply to everybody.
Okay, uh, yeah, she was a total hypocrite on this. We can just say it. And I think it's really, really unfortunate, but, uh, Mr. Heinz, your, your point was well taken. Okay, finally, let's move on to this library question. Uh, we will start with you, Dr. Heinz. Pima County plans to close several libraries. I'm going to mention that Sarita and Green Valley are not on the list. How did we get here and do you support the plan on the table now? And I want to point out that I think Pima done a very good job explaining, uh, why certain libraries have to be closed. I really want to congratulate them for that. But, uh, how'd we get here and do you support the current plan?
Sure. And I, this, I think that's really important, the topic to talk about and also to appreciate your clarification because this, we are getting, we're, we're hearing from people already very concerned about this as if a decision has been made. And just to reinforce what you said, this is an ongoing discussion. No final decision has been made, uh, at all. Uh, and I'm very proud the community has come out and, and really, I think impressive numbers to let us know, uh, what they need and what they expect from their library system. And the library has promised more public outreach as well with the, the coming ones. The fact is our libraries serve many critical functions. So, uh, for, for many segments of our, of our community, that you can get your blood pressure checked there, right? I mean, you can get obviously access to all sorts of information, access to the internet. Everybody is welcome from all walks of life, right? And, um, look, and that's incredibly important. So, um, like, it, it really, we, you're again, middle class, working class, struggling with homelessness. You're always welcome. And our libraries connect community members, um, to resources. It's a very powerful place and a powerful thing for, for these folks. So, um, it's important to, I think also that, that we are all, I think all the supervisors are doing this. But my team and I are meeting with leadership for the library as well as county leadership to make sure that we all understand very thoroughly exactly what's going on, especially with the main downtown library, uh, and what, what, you know, a bit more about how we got to this place and, and what can do possibly going forward. As in terms of closing, uh, closing smaller branches, uh, there are currently three being considered at this point. I'm not sure that that is necessary. I can, I can see why with the main library that, that it may just not make sense given, uh, you know, the, the maintenance, uh, things, other deferred maintenance and such that, that have built up over time. But I, I think we can possibly, uh, you know, get, we can hopefully not have to close any of the smaller branches. And I do understand that the, the system is struggling, that the, uh, you know, we have a lot of excellent staff. But, uh, you know, we have, I think, uh, we have seen a 16% reduction in our library staff. And, and in terms of the amount of budgeted authorized positions that we've been able to, to fund. And yet the work that we are calling upon them to do certainly hasn't diminished, uh, the size of the staff has. So doing, doing, doing a lot, or doing the same amount or more with less in terms of, uh, the staff budget. So I do think we can do better. Um, and I do think that the taxpayers is, again, this is up to our, our taxpayers as to whether they want this tip or not. I think that they would be willing to pay potentially, um, a couple bucks more per month. I don't mean hundreds. I mean literally two or $3 a month, um, in their library district, in their library taxing district to save their branches in those three specifically. I think that that is something, and you know, we can, we can, uh, spend some time gathering information and, and listening to folks to see if that's true. But I, I, that would be one of my goals is to, to what we can to prevent those three smaller branches from closing, even if eventually we do have to do that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Becker, as Dr. Heinz pointed out, it's just a plan, but it's on the table. It would involve some closures. Do you support it?
Well, I, I was happy to see that the Library Commission was meeting and it seemed like they were getting good, good, uh, reach into the community, getting a lot of feedback on what was important to the community. The unity, you know, you know, the libraries, as, as we know them, uh, many, many years ago, have, have more quite a bit. You know, they, they're almost more community center now than, than libraries that, that have days gone by. There's things we could do, however, to figure out what, what services that we need at the different facilities. And with the staffing shortage, it would be great to find out why there's staffing shortage. Is it simply a pay issue? Are some of the employees uncomfortable with the type of services being delivered? Do they feel safe? All those types of things. And perhaps there's an opportunity to use volunteer labor to help meet that need without having to maybe increase the tax. So I, I think by, by working with the community, and I think the Library Commission has also softened, uh, their recommendations on when these libraries should close. They've talked about keeping one open where two were pretty close together, just to kind of soften the impact. So I think we're heading in the right direction in this conversation, but it's absolutely the, the people's decision to find out what, tell us what services they need and us to figure out how to best deliver it, uh, with whatever means we have.
Very good. Uh, one more question then before we go to the closing comments. We will start with you, Mr. Becker. What are you hearing on the campaign trail? What is concerning people?
Well, people are concerned about their economic health. Well, people are concerned about their economic health, but that's not just a Pima County issue, but it certainly has some bearing. Their, their filling squeeze. Cost of groceries, cost of rent, cost of everything has gone up and they're struggling there. They also don't necessarily feel as safe as they would like. They're being told that crime stats are improving, but the reality on the street is not showing that. Businesses are being vandalized, retail theft is the thing. We had the, the thing with the, boot the shop on Speedway recently where there were almost 200 rounds of fire extending. And, you know, the police didn't show up for, I think, 45 minutes with such a, a dire situation going on. Some of the possibility of the numbers improving from a crime perspective could simply be that our residents have given up on reporting crime because they're not getting response and they don't see a lot of value in doing. So.
A quick follow up on that then. Do you think that that is a county issue or do you think it's a city of Tucson issue as far as people just giving up on reporting crime?
I think it could potentially be both. I'm more familiar with the Tucson numbers, which makes up a significant part of Pima County, but they, they manage and control their, their police, but we do have mutual aid agreements in place where sheriff's deputies can come and help. And having those situations in place, you know, 45 minutes is still a long time. Nobody could get there 45 minutes. So we need to do better by our resident public safety is a sacred responsibility of any level of government and we need to strengthen that.
Okay, very good. Dr. Heinz, what are you hearing on the campaign trail?
Oh, lots of things. I'd say one of the, hey, probably the most about is, well, one of these two, housing, affordable housing, price of housing, you know, going up for everybody and, and also street living. Housing has gotten way too expensive. And people are paying 30, 40, 50% of their income just to keep some pad up their head. That's not a place where we need to be. That puts many, many more families at risk of living in their car or, or full on homeless. A bit on preschool, there are a lot of families that can't afford it and thanks to Supervisor Scott, we do have a program, another first for the Pima County to help, to help now 1900, circa this past year, the preschool, basic counties obviously, I think it figures out that. Retention to meet the B issue. Situations. Need to make smart. Be not just, they're always loud and barking, you know, all of them. They want, they actually have bus service. They want sidewalks safe. And they prefer like, so cool. And they want protected bike lanes. Those, it's a good way to get around, basically, you know, safely, but be great to protect them a bit more when a car and bicycle will get together in that situation. I admit it. The most expensive way to get healthcare of any kind and doing whatever we can through our county health department under the amazing direction of Dr. Teresa Cullen-Adlal, actually. To get prevention, to figure out if you even have a disease. Do you have high blood pressure? You never knew that. Like that's something you can, as I mentioned, get, get checked at the lab. We need to do better in terms of getting out there and helping people understand the, their own healthcare issues and then getting them referred to a place where they can have it fixed. But homelessness, I'll come back to that one. Truly, truly from business owners, from individuals, from people that are very, I mean, look, I, I think we all have seen the situation getting worse and worse and worse. In the 20 years I've lived here, I certainly have. And it's, it is absolutely heartbreaking to have to walk into a convenience store by two, three, four people who are, are hanging out outside. I actually recently held the door open for a lady who was, I thought, walking into, I believe, 7-Eleven and she thanked me and said, I'm actually right here. And then she sat down on the wall outside of the store and I was like, this is, this is heartbreaking. How do we have 2,200 of our neighbors outside? We have to fix this and the county can be a powerful way to do it and partnering with all of our jurisdictions. And so, yeah, that's what I hear a lot about.
Very good. Okay, we're gonna now move into our closing comments. We're gonna start with you, Dr. Heinz, 90 seconds and use it however you want.
Oh, wow. Okay. Oh, gosh. Okay. Well, I, I do, I really appreciate the opportunity to, to reach my constituents, voters here in Southern Arizona. And it's so incredibly important, I, I would say even, even more so than, than it has been in any other election cycle, that, that the voters get the best information possible. And directly from the candidates whenever possible. This, the misinformation that is out there right now is, it's rampant. It is very difficult to know what, I mean, what even has any, what, what is truthful, what is sort of, it, it's terrible. So having these opportunities there for people that they can get later if they're not watching now that they could, it's, it's really, so. This has been, as I, I referred to before, one of the, I think, I think this is the most effective I have ever felt in any public office. Working in the legislature was great. Learned a lot about getting things passed up there, but to get anything done, you need 30 other people in the House to get it through the process after multiple committees. It takes months. And then it goes over to the Senate side, depending on side you're on. And then you have to do the whole thing again. You find 16 people there and then you have to convince the governor to sign it. That's every one of the 13 or 14 bills that I got through the legislature during those four years was quite a lift and it just took forever to do some of these things. And on the board, which has obviously a limited, more limited scope, we're kind of the combination executive and legislative branches for the county. On this board, I can put out a pilot program idea like the, like Eels, like the Emergency Addiction Legal Services Program, which came from COVID to help people not get thrown out onto the street during a public health crisis. And I just needed two other colleagues, three of five, to get that pilot going. And now that's part of the county government and I'm, I'm really glad that it is. So just one example of how effective any, any one supervisor can be on a county board. And I, it's been a really great, in my experience, it's been, it's really been great for me personally. And I've learned a heck of a lot about county government, which I did not know admittedly before going into this. And I, I think that I will be able to serve the constituents and the voters of Southern Arizona and specifically District Two very well, better. Starting on day one in 2025, if they are returning, will return me to the post and I ask for their votes.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Becker, closing comments.
Thanks again for this. This has been awesome. We talked about some really important issues. I come before you today dressed for the job that I want to. I wanna be your county supervisor and to combat homeless that we mentioned that I would like to respond to during this time. 10% of the homeless are people who are willing and able to get home. Most of the rest unfortunately are tied up in drugs and so forth, and because of their freedom, it's more challenging to help them. There's nothing humane about leaving people on the street like that. We need to have some tough love and enforce laws and give them the option of getting help instead of going to jail if they break law to, to help those people move, move away from that and back into normal life. I think two main things, aside from all kinds of policy decisions that you need in a supervisor, someone who shows up on time, someone who listens. Looking at just the past 14, the first 10 meetings of this year, our incumbent missed, we'll call 10 out of 14 times. You can watch the videos for yourself. I will be the kind of supervisor that Pima County has always deserved. And not only will I be at the meeting, I will do the hard work beforehand to know what questions need to be asked. I will be in the community, attending meetings, doing outreach, sending out monthly newsletters and connecting with people. And I promise you, I will never ask what political party the residents of District Two are. Let's face it, this district is made up in such a way, it won't be the Republican or the Democrat that decide who builds this seat for you. It'll be those independent minded voters that don't bond with the two made. And I respectfully ask for your vote and I request you go to backbacker.org to learn more about me and my campaign. Thank you for your thought.
Okay, very good. Well, I think I agree. We have covered an awful lot of ground in the past hour and I know that you both have a, another forum tomorrow night, League of Women Voters. Gonna leave that one. We are gonna have this forum available on several of our platforms in coming weeks. And people can watch and re-watch as the election draws close. So once again, I really wanna thank you both for your candor and for your availability. And to those who are watching, again, this is gonna be available for quite a while on our website and I hope that you got something out of it. Everybody have a great rest of your evening.